Okay, it is 6:30. Today is Tuesday, June 29th, 2021. We have the Halifax Board of Selectmen. We have the agenda. The meeting is being taped by Area 58 and Simon casted out on Zoom. Question?
Judge Lee, to the class of United States of America, we consider Republic of Washington one nation, under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Are there any additions? There's a couple of subtractions. Mr. Malias withdrew. And then, there was a...
Michael like Neto also approved.
Alright, with those changes, is there a motion to approve?
Put them in.
So a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous? Good. Ash.
I move to call in Mark and Vennermark number 130 for 111,104,113. Vennermark number 1, 1,258,194.2 in the end of 2016, 14,886,51.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I recuse.
I move to approve payment of the following selection bills for the law, $420. Yep?
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
I recuse. Okay, Charlie, um, the mail? Do you have anything in the mail?
Well, I don't know what all these you want to do at all first. I can tell you, um, I assume the first are going to take a little time. So let's go to the junk cars I did. I'm working with the police chief to get the letters out. We should get those letters out to residents tomorrow. Offer funding to Plymouth County about anything back from them. But Troy will be at, the advisor will be tomorrow. So he may get some information out of that.
The competition is to approve, at least the way the advisor will do.
So is the idea that the money's going to go through the county and then to the town? Um, I don't know whether you believe, maybe during, during, because I believe I have a note from the chief about his contract, but I'm not sure of that.
Okay.
Um, you talked also about the jet ski problem. Road opening for 3:13, you heard?
Is there a motion to approve?
My motion.
A second? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Pass this unanimously. Is that the only other? Well, I guess we should go then to the appointment of town council?
If you're ready to do that. Um, just remember the mics. We have the AC system on, and it's been warm enough to leave people off. So you'll need to speak loud for the room, but also make sure your mics are close by.
Okay. Is there a motion for town council?
Larry, I know you're very important, but we didn't get him. He's aware of our situation, and he's done a good job using the ideas that I've had here. We're going to give advice, so I think it would be fair to give you your point.
Good, is there a second? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion for another?
I'm motioning to approve our two, White, Brooks, and Dorance.
So Paul Lorenzis?
Dorance.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Troy, of you? Against?
No.
Okay, two to one. Okay. Procedures for determining posting for the agenda for the Board of Selectmen meetings?
You would pass?
I had asked that we're emailing the agenda before it's posted. Does anybody want to make an edit or change? And that we're seeing the agenda before I post it to the website, I'll probably do.
Okay.
So as part of that, I'll need a deadline, in the sense of obviously I'm not waiting for Friday 3 o'clock anymore to do this. So if the board wants to impose a deadline for whatever, I assume sometime on Thursday, as to, A, that anything that's already on the agenda, people send it in if they're sending it in Friday afternoon, Monday, Thursday afternoon, whatever, after the deadline, that's it. It's not going on the agenda. Because I can't go and go through the approval process, let's say, two, three, four, five times. It's going to be one and done. So if you want to do it this way, which is perfectly fine, give me a time and date as to when everything's going to be on the agenda. And then I'll get it out to you by a certain time on Thursday. And then you're asking for fallback position. If I've not called all three of you with approval for the agenda, I need a procedure to follow.
I think if everyone got the agenda sometime Thursday morning from our office to review, and then, I don't know, 2 o'clock on Thursday is the latest? Is that 11:00 PM or Charles?
So let's say, so what we would do is say, okay, we're closing the agenda 9:00 AM, let's say, on Thursday morning. It gets to you no later than 11:00. Your approval no later than 2:00 PM. If I don't have approvals by 2:00 PM, what am I doing?
Well, the current process is you've just been posting and we ask to add items to the agenda. So I would think as long as you get something to us to review beforehand, and if we have items to add, we add items.
Okay, so unless I hear from you and add items, delete items, whatever the situation is, at 2:00 PM it goes up with whatever added items.
Yeah, I think that's fair to you, and I think that's fair to Sue and Zatarra, because they had asked us to make sure that we start getting this.
So I communicate, obviously if there are changes happening in the meantime, somebody sends something in at 11:00 from three of you, I get that out to them. Hey, here's, this was the original agenda. Member X was asked that this issue be added. That's fine.
Okay, and then next up, we have a list of complaints.
I think you're going to get it done in two minutes. The point of town council, I don't know, my recommendation back last week was either to put all this to the town council or give another firm as an example. Um, I obviously have not got any, except for Lorenzis. When I contacted Regina Ryan, she said, basically I knew that there would be additional complaints beyond what existed. And I contacted earlier that it'd probably be about $7,510,000 to investigate all complaints.
Well, seeing that, we appoint to Brooks and Lorenzis. How do we get response from them? See how many advisors they can go with.
I'll do that, Charlie. And this will hold over, unless you have another meeting, this will hold over to July 13.
Um, I would think that once we get a response from them, we should try to schedule something to just vote to send it to them. So when we get a response, we can do a quick meeting. Alright, uh, we've got up now at 6:40, Mrs. Basile. Would you mind coming up to the mic?
Susan, don't worry, you don't bite too much.
I'm being honest.
Is there anybody else from the historical commission, historic district commission, or people who are interested in serving who are here tonight? Well, no, we were going to go, also John Maris. Yeah, and I think it was Todd Nordberg.
So if you wouldn't mind pulling those mics close to you guys?
We're going to say yes.
Okay, so, uh, Sue, would you mind just explaining what the town historian does?
I do all the history of the town, tries to protect it. Pictures, newspapers, newspapers. If you write a bench at the museum, you can see all that stuff. I also am a postgraduate student of hers. I research every house in town. I was only supposed to be doing it until I remember Dizzle, but it's been a tough two years. I just went right down the street to the mall. So I'm making much research that one of these days will all make a museum. Right down to the mall.
How, how long have you been the historian for the town?
I must admit, this is the first time I've been asked to come, third of your staff. And I might remember you telling me?
I, I think the perspective that I had was to come and tell everybody what it is that you do. So the community is more aware of what all the boards and all the volunteers are doing for our town. To try to be, to, to basically tell everyone what, what everyone does in town.
Well, I am the town historian, but I also present the historic commission, the historic in the house.
Okay. So, John, what, what does the historic district commission do?
Oh, we go with the, how does the old, the mine, the vintage? We're making sure it can modify the, who would tell you where to get it.
Okay. Okay.
Now, please try to verify to people that don't know, it's only the outside of the older homes. You can do whatever you want on the inside. That's important to a lot of people. They don't know that.
Okay.
You can't, you know, you can't stop them wanting to enter the inside of the home. It's important to keep the outside structure the same.
Okay. Troy?
How long was it, 30 years? I thought it was one.
Anybody who wants to step up and take over, feel free.
No, I think you've done the actual job. Too much, I think, well, they want to have, actually, college stories.
I just enjoy doing what I do. Keeps me off you, huh? You know it's been tough, so I keep busy.
I hear you.
Ashley, do you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you for coming in and telling us what you're doing.
Basically, what you're calling me.
No, the thunderstorm's holding off.
And then I open this cabinet on the platform channel, you understand? I'm sorry for people, but I don't go out in the storm. Sorry.
I will get, we appoint children to the historic general, historic district commission.
Is there a second? All those in favor, aye? Okay, unanimous. Thank you guys for coming in and letting us know what it is that you guys do for our town. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Farley?
Good evening, Yvonne.
Good evening, how are you?
Very well.
So you filled out the talent bank form for the zoning board of appeals. Do you want to just, um, tell us what your interest is about that? I think everyone, um...
Um, pretty much, I don't think I have much to say, but help and serve. So it's been, my agenda on loan is to serve the community that I live in and try in whatever I can. So because I believe that I do have the capacity to serve in any of the board that's available here. So if I can help, so that's why I'm putting my name on, on the talent board. So to serve in that, uh, zoning board of appeal.
Okay. Uh, I should recuse myself for the zoning board. Troy, turn it over.
Wait, what is your background as far as knowing, if you're anybody in the town?
Um, no, that's the first time that I put my name on the zoning, uh, board. So I don't have any background in it. But again, that is based on the duty of the responsibility of the board is to interpreting the ordinance and deciding and make some decision as a group on the, the valiances in appeal. So I think I am capable of doing that by, by what I've heard and read.
Have you ever attended one of the GAs meeting?
The, the board of appeal meeting?
Yep.
Yep.
What do you think you bring to the table?
What's that?
What do you think you bring to the table?
What do I think I, I will bring to the table? Uh, well, my, um, ability to work with others and helping to interpreting the, the ordinance. So which, I think I have that ability to do that. And my background as a community organizer, so that I've been on the table.
Have you covered the site plan or the bylaws?
I can pull the bylaws, but no the site, site plan, no.
You attended the meeting?
Yeah, when I can.
How do you deal with aggressive individuals?
Excuse me?
How do you deal with aggression?
Aggressive?
How do you deal with?
Aggressive, aggressive individual?
Yes.
Oh, well, you know, my background is, not only I'm a social worker and I have a training on behavioral analysis as well. So at the end of the day, it's not about the individual. It's about the behaviors that you need to remain calm and do what you need to do. It's not going to be my opinion. It's going to be based on the ordinance, the law that's set by the town. So we need to follow. Yes, so valences can be based on a group of us working together to do that. But at the end of the day, so we will work with it and find a solution. So aggressive or not, so it's not personal. Thanks.
So you guys do it?
Um, well, I just, um, want you guys to consider to nominating me to be part of this board. And not being biased by how long I've been living here. So I will say. Anything else?
Thank you.
Aye, thank you so much.
Mr. Man?
What do you mean?
Do you have a question? The question we reappointed to the meeting?
That's correct. I've sat on the board for 32 years. A volunteer, starting in 1989. Became the, uh, the chairman. And, uh, I've worked with a fantastic group of people that are, each have their own distinct, separate contributions that they're able to make to the board. And I think we, we certainly work very well together. Can get certainly complicated and involved. And, uh, and I greatly appreciate everybody's input. And I think we work very well as a, as a group together. And I think we work very well with the other members of the town also. Particularly the building inspector, our land use attorneys. It's, uh, it's, uh, it's been an education, sitting on the board. Learned an awful lot. I've taken quite a few courses. I, I, in, I've taken courses with that gentleman from the executive office of community developments in town Boston, Mr. Don Schmidt. He was very helpful coming out. Taking classes with the zoning laws, ordinances and whatnot. Uh, over with the old colony planning council, over in Brockton, myself, Mr. Nezrela and Mrs. Tinkham. Went over and took courses over there. The job itself involves quite a bit of research, to be honest with you. It's very complicated. I think most of you know, I'm a cop. Don't, I don't pretend to, you know, be any kind of expert or whatnot. But I think I have a pretty good handle on at least finding out where to go, who to speak with, and find out where the best research is to, uh, to make the proper decision. It's a, it's an involved board. It's a, you know, being quasi judicial. It's, uh, there's an awful lot of regulations, our own bylaws, you know, together with, uh, the state bylaws, 40A, and the different chapters that involve particularly just the zoning board. So, uh, like I said, it's been involved over the last 32 years. I've learned an awful lot and I enjoy it. I, if I, I wouldn't stay on the board if I didn't. And, uh, I'd like to, uh, continue with, uh, giving my time and efforts to the town. Think it's made a difference.
How do you deal with disgruntled individuals?
I'm sorry?
Just trying to integrate your resident?
I've been a resident for, yikes, uh, 40 years in Halifax. 1980, so we're on 42 years of, of lived in Halifax.
How do you feel with the disgruntled part of resident, uh, senior?
How do I feel about it?
No, how would you deal with it?
Oh, well, you could deal with anything else. You know, it's, uh, it happens. We all don't think the same, all the members of the board. We all don't have the same opinions. We all look at things differently. We all disagree. But I think in the long run, disgruntled, I don't, I think that's the term. I think we have a real respect for each other, for each other's, uh, opinion and whatnot. And like I said, you can, we all don't vote the same, we all don't think the same. But I think that's what makes it a, a productive board, to be perfectly honest with you.
I asked if you were attending town meeting, but I think we've heard you there a couple of times at this point.
Yeah, once or twice, yeah. I don't think I've missed too many, to be honest with you.
What, um, what other positions do you hold in the town right now? As far as committees and positions?
I've been a police officer in town now for 29, eight years, uh, part-time. And I retired from down the sheriff's department. I also sit on the municipal and school committee. Let's see. The, uh, the building assessment, uh, group that we sit with, with, uh, Mr. Andrews and the chiefs are trying to assess, assess the buildings in town, uh, being on the municipal and school building committee. They thought it would be advantageous to have somebody from the board, you know, on there. So I volunteered to sit on that. Think that's it. I think that's all the boards I sit on.
And what do you think of the company?
Oh, yeah, we can't forget the moderator, can we? That in and of itself was also, can't forget that one. But that was by default, Troy.
It was your fault.
Yeah.
I don't have any further to add.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Man? To your opinion? She's, she's on, she's at soccer on her way. Thank you very much.
Happy hot Tuesday.
Want to tell us about yourself and why you want to be here?
Um, resident of Halifax for six years now, give or take. I've been following along with, uh, a lot of the town goings on for three to four years now. Uh, I feel that, uh, I've, I've gone to enough meetings, I've attended zoning board meetings. Some, uh, I guess you could say for other reasons, uh, other than inquiring about what's going on in the town. I've attended, you know, numerous town meetings. At this point, I feel that, uh, you know, I could play a decent role, learn some stuff on the, on, on the way. I know quite a bit about the bylaws, I've been reading into those. Just trying to do my part as a citizen volunteer.
What do you think you bring to the table?
Um, new ideas possibly, depending on, you know, what's, what changes. I know we're trying to amend some of the bylaws, uh, change some of the bylaws. And, you know, I think everybody's had some sort of say in changing the definitions of how they land, how they work. Uh, they don't quite make sense on some ways or another. I mean, I guess it depends on how you read it. I'm sure there's a lot that I have to learn in order to serve the board.
Have you read and followed up with our bylaws and some of those things that you're talking about that are, are during?
Uh, yeah, I've, I've, I have my own booklet that I've made and little notes on it, on the bylaws. And, you know, like I said, I've attended numerous town meetings. I've been at some of the zoning board meetings, either Adam or Zoom. You know, it's, it's a learning curve, I'm not going to know everything right off the jump, you know? Something that's going to take time. But, uh, you know, I'm sure that's how everybody else starts up.
How do you deal with aggressive individuals?
I guess you'd have to address each person individually on, on the, on the occasion of what it is. I mean, if, if somebody's aggressive or upset about something going on, I mean, you, the whole part of the zoning board is to help guide people, instruct them on the bylaws. I mean, we, we have to follow the rules. And just because someone's aggressive, I mean, obviously you don't want to escalate the situation. You want to, you want to get somebody to, to understand the reasoning behind what the zoning enforcement is and what they have to follow the rules on. So, uh, you know, obviously don't, don't get them any more aggravated. But naturally, you want to, you want to help them understand what they need to do to proceed.
And if they refuse?
If, after they refuse, call Mr. Bird when he's on duty and get them in there and get them out. So if they, if they're going to get that aggressive, I mean, they have to follow the rules. I, I mean, this, what would you, what would you think? I mean, you know, if the board's all in favor of not approving whatever it is that they're trying to accomplish because it doesn't follow the bylaws and they're upset about it, then you have to de-escalate it, you know, as professionally as you possibly can. You're not going to swear and yell at people and tell them to get out. I mean, you have to be polite and courteous and help them understand. If they don't, they don't, and they have to be removed. Thank you.
Hi, how are you?
Want to tell us something about yourself and why you're going to be here?
Absolutely. So, this year, I decided that I wanted to get more involved in the community. I've been a resident for about seven years now. And I tried to attend some town meetings. I went to the election. I tried reading some of the minutes of the different boards. And what was enticing to me is that the Zoning Board of Appeals already has written bylaws. So, from my background, I am all about documentation, I like understanding rules. So, it was just an easier fit for me to fall into something that I could easily learn and understand within existing board and existing guidelines to go by, instead of some of the other boards where it seemed to be more creative or maybe would be standalone because there's only one or no individuals. And I'm also interested in just helping the town. It's a place that we'd love to be in. And so, being part of those decisions to keep it the way we all want it to be for a place to come home, but also seeing where we do need to make adjustments to make it a better place.
What is your background?
So, for a long time, I've worked in financial services and insurance, mostly in technology. But I started off as a business analyst and then a systems analyst. And now, I just run larger groups of that. But that's why I just have that kind of analytical background. I like reading and understanding all of the details about it and interpreting it. And I've also been working in financial services. There's a lot we have to do with compliance and laws and making sure that we abide by them or else we can get into big trouble. So, I'm used to working in that sort of environment. It's comfortable for me.
So, you've attended town meetings?
Just this year.
Have you ever attended a VDA meeting?
No, I have not. I tried reading some of the minutes. I did try reading the bylaws as well. To be honest, I have a few more questions about it since it is all new to me, but that's something I would obviously research and dive into. I've also reviewed the zoning map and I understand the different areas of the town. So, I've been trying to do research that way. That's a good question. I've had to deal with a lot of personalities in my career. So, working in technology and with a lot of, a lot of risk on the line and working in financial services, things can get pretty heated. So, I've worked a lot in that space and had to work with people being very upset or again, people getting into a lot of trouble. My father was also worked for the phone company up until his retirement. So, he was in the IBW for a year. So, I worked with a lot of, or I should say, associated with a lot of blue collar workers as well. And they have wonderful personalities too. So, I've dealt with a wide range. So, it doesn't bother me. I don't take it personally. So, if someone gets angry, you know, similar to what everybody else has said, I don't further escalate the situation, but I'm not thrown off by it at all.
Do you have some other questions considering your involvement?
I expect people to, if they're not getting what they'd like. But my understanding is, is that if the board makes the final decision, that's what it is. And so, if somebody's not listening to that decision, I'm assuming that there are already some guidelines about how that's addressed. And I don't know how that is, but I have no problem following whatever those rules are. I'm not sure if that answered your question.
I like how you described the, I get you guys. My dad is a phone company worker and a part of that union as well, so.
Awesome.
Very nice way to talk about their position.
Yes. You got to know them, love them, but awesome.
I got one more.
Oh, there is one thing. I actually noted on my talent bank form. I just want to make sure I'm being completely transparent because it asked if there would be any sort of conflict of interest. I don't believe in this case it would be, but I just want to make sure that it's on the record. So, the company that I work for, it's actually a parent company to a surety insurance company and a handful of surety agencies. So, my insurance company underwrites bid bonds and contract bonds, which I know the town, if people are doing work in the town, they would need to get, you know, depending on the job, they may need to get contract bonds and they may bid for it. And I just want to make sure that it wouldn't be perceived that I'd be trying to steer anybody wanting to work in the town to my company. So, I'm actually not licensed to sell insurance, so I can't even bring it up to people or else I could even lose my job. And that's why it's just not a risk. So, I just didn't want that coming up later on. If I were to move forward, I didn't want to make anybody uncomfortable by not sharing that information.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Tom, is that it?
Good evening.
Want to tell us something about yourself and why you're going to be here?
Sure. My name is Tom. My wife and I moved to Halifax eight and a half years ago. We are parents to two young children, two and two months. I spent 13 and a half years in banking. And I've transitioned to insurance. I own a property and casualty insurance company in Hanson, similar to the previous candidate. We do have some overlap with customers, both builders and buyers in Hanson, in Halifax, rather. But the reason that I'm interested is because a long time ago, my father told me that when raising a family, I should look for three things in a town. Every town should have a strong youth athletic program, Little League. Every town should be home to a community bank. And every town should have citizens who are willing to volunteer their time and efforts in towns to serve the municipality that they live in and that they're looking to raise their children in. So, we have a young family. I have not attended any zoning board meetings. I've not been to a town meeting in Halifax. But I have no preconceived notions or ideas or agendas in sitting here, other than to serve. I'm a quick learner, a fast study. I'm always prepared and basically interested in serving and volunteering my time. I haven't always had time in growing and acquiring a business. I haven't always had time. My time has opened up a bit. My kids are young, in bed fairly early. So, I have time after work to dedicate now that I didn't always previously have. As stated, no real, no real experience in the field. I indicated in my talent bank form that if this wasn't the right fit, as determined by the committee or the board, that would be perfectly fine, but I would like to reserve my candidacy for other positions that require attention and might fall short in garnering applicants. That's where I am.
So, what do you think you can do to improve it?
I mean, I'm overly prepared. I'm thorough. I keep my composure well. I don't like, I don't like surprises. So, I would always be at the forefront of any applicant or any decision-making process. I would be well versed in that. And I would quite frankly rely on the other board members to fill me in where I fell short. Like I said, I have no experience, but that doesn't scare me away from the opportunity to learn.
Do you deal with aggression?
Sure. Working in banking for 13 years, that's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of emotion there. I think the most important thing is to keep your composure and treat others with respect. I mean, there's no, there's no uniformity in how people react in situations. People react differently and respond differently to adversity. And I think that's collectively something that we all should understand. People come from different backgrounds. People have different purposes. People have different avenues towards success. And sometimes, they might view a decision made by a board as an obstacle, but rather, I think it's probably an opportunity for a conversation. Again, I would rely on the other board members because I wouldn't know much, I wouldn't know much if anything going in. It would all be a learning process for me.
Thank you.
You answered all my questions. Okay. You did good, you're listening to me.
Sorry?
You're listening to me.
Yeah, I had the opportunity for five people. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Stankford? Neil, thank you.
We found quite a few things tonight as he reached out to you about.
No. We don't hear at all. Ms. Kenyon make it in? No. Three.
We haven't heard from Neil.
No, no messages from him. Just making sure, seeing him on the list at all. And Karen?
She was here at the last meeting. Did she know to be here tonight?
I mean, I think, what do you expect?
She's at the tryouts right now for D12 down on Somers Street. She's trying to pull this up. And she reached out early today because she was trying to get the fire department set up with the irrigation. She was going to be here tonight. Not sure if she realized the time. We didn't give her 10 minutes for each.
I had sent out the, emailed everybody and specified we weren't setting aside times. We were just, aside from historical commission, we would start with ZBA at 6:45 and go through them and then go through everybody else. Obviously, it didn't work out very well last time. We're trying to assign times.
So, can we wait to vote on this in case Neil shows up or any of the others or if Tina shows up late? Yeah. I see that Neil's on it.
Well, I don't, so if you want to move on to finance committee capital plan, I can tell you that the finance committee met last night and all the members voted for appointing Michael O'Brien to the finance. I don't know what the board wants to do on those two.
What were the two candidates' names on that?
You had Michael O'Brien and you had Todd Darkey, who I believe at one point was on the call. I don't see him right now. There he is, yeah, on the D.
He's listed here.
Yeah, well, I found it. Sometimes it depends on what you write, what your name in as, whether you put last name first, which is what you did this time.
Do you want to unmute?
Sure. Todd, if you could unmute?
Hey, Todd.
You need to speak loud.
Can you hear? The board here? Yep, I cranked up the volume here on the top speakers. All right. Would you have preference, be finance committee or capital plan?
Uh, me either or, the finance committee. You know, as I mentioned before, we're just looking to volunteer, so no worries. The general board thinks, you know, if I said, and you know, whoever he is, I'm happy to serve the town.
This is the first time he's filled out talent bank form. He's been, you've been in town eight years? Six years?
Uh, no, yeah, six years.
Have you been to town meetings?
Have you been to town meetings?
So, yeah, I attended the finance committee, you know, my talent form, it might be that committee, so I attended that last Monday, the 21st, I guess. And then I attended the, this meeting last week, the 22nd.
But, but no town meeting yet, correct?
No, no, top of the day, so no.
Okay. And I, I think that was the same for both candidates because it, was it Mr. O'Brien or Mr. Bennett?
Mr. O'Brien is the other candidate.
O'Brien.
Michael O'Brien.
And he had just moved to town three or four months ago. So, he didn't attend town meeting either. I think they're both qualified candidates, just.
Is Michael O'Brien on?
Uh, no, Mr. Board, you can do it.
Correct. I make a motion to appoint Michael O'Brien to the finance committee.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, aye? Okay, unanimous? Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Darkey to capital plan? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Darkey.
Sure, thank you.
Okay.
So, in Concom board, I take it the idea would be to wait until 13? Did you miss Ken that? Or at least she may have talked to you at one meetings earlier?
I don't.
I think that convention, sorry.
Yeah, I think we interviewed for board, I have.
Correct.
So, I guess we should hold off until the next meeting.
Okay. Let's see, Concom, sort of our time about that. Mr. School Building Committee, Mr. Cory, obviously you can hear at this point. Youth and Rec, Mr. Ragnada withdrew, Mr. Stankford's not here. He's no holes, I saw her. Yep, she's on. I'm going to ask her to mute Sarah. Nobles, if you could unmute at your end.
Hi.
Hi, Sarah.
I'm here.
Do you want to tell us why you're interested in joining Youth and Rec and a little bit about yourself?
Sure. So, I've lived in town for 16 years. I am the vice president of the Pops, both the playground. And I worked on the PTO as the vice president for a school year, so. And I have worked with Dick Seal or Karen Honey. We put together an adult volleyball program, which unfortunately got canceled due to COVID. So, I'm just expanding the program to the part it has to offer. I understand that we have limited facilities. We don't have any one school in town and only one gym we can work with. But I think we can expand using other outdoor facilities and improve some facilities that we already have. Like, we'd love to be able to expand the adult offerings that we have and do more events. I know that thus far, it's been kind of a one-man show with, you know, Dick kind of kind of pulled things off all on his own. But I think if we have a full board, we can, you know, really expand the offerings, especially if we work together with other committees in town and parts. Commissioning now, it's a full board for the first time in years as well. So, I've kind of decided to bring some new life to those two areas and add some new activities and offerings to the town.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Sarah? Have you attended town meeting?
Yes, I've attended almost every town meeting for at least the past six or seven years. I, I was trying to think back to when I started going regularly and I couldn't tell you, but I vote almost everyone whenever I can make it.
Okay. Do we have one or two?
We have two vacancies at this point. I went back and looked at the notes from last week. So, it's that I committee reappointed, I just said your name, which was for Ken Bedrow. You had two vacancies.
Okay.
And also Bruce Clay, you had two vacancies.
So, we have Bruce, Dick.
Which who you reappointed, Ken Bedrow, you reappointed, Mr. Ragnada, who has withdrawn.
Reappointed her last week.
Okay, so we're down to one. Which in this case, I don't know what you want, you, I mean, if we could say Cory right now, he's the only other person.
And he hasn't reached out at all.
Is there a motion to appoint or you guys want to hold off? Or what do you want to do?
And he's interested in serving in all the positions.
I have to move on. Sarah, move to Youth and Rec.
Is there a second?
There's no.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Unanimous? All right, thank you very much, Sarah.
Thank you.
Okay. Marlene? I'm Marlene. Sorry, I should have recused myself faster on the last one. So you also applied for Americans with Disabilities Act?
Yes, I did.
Are you familiar with this, um, board?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Marlene?
All of your acquaintances as well.
What's that?
All of your acquaintances as well, officially.
How I'm acquainted with the law? Oh, so I am, as I mentioned before, I am a social worker and I've been in the field for the past, I work mostly with kids with disability. So I've been working in the field for the past 20-plus years as a social worker, so therefore I am very acquainted with the law, the Disability Act.
Is there a motion?
Every one of you may lose.
Excuse me? Amity.
Amity. As American with Disabilities Act.
I second.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Marlene. Okay, so we have contract with the police chief.
Which he's on the line. You could ask him if he wants to do that executive session, I'll unmute him. Or ask him on the chief.
Yes, Charlie, I sent you a copy, same copy of the contract, uh, or two copies, uh, than, than the board signed.
Okay.
We will consider the new evaluation, probably, uh, you know.
Then that sounds great, the board can approve it, they'll sign it, and get that done.
All right, so we'll, we'll just review it in executive session?
Well, no, you...
Because we did, we didn't?
Oh, well, you could go ahead, yeah, we could do it that way.
Yeah, yeah, I think we can change it to, uh, review it and, uh, sign this into the challenge.
Okay.
Well, also incorporating the comments from both attorney Neo and attorney Hill. And the chief has reviewed that with those comments concluded.
Do you move we approve the contract?
Yep.
Is there a second? All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous.
Thanks, chief, we'll get it signed, get the copy back to you.
Do you want to just discuss the jet ski issue while you're on the line?
Yeah, like I, uh, I sent, uh, you know, Charlie, the situation is we've been trying to, uh, get some patrols on the water, on the pond. Unfortunately, um, we haven't been successful in, uh, getting the officers to a long yet for the patrols with the fire department and the boat. So, uh, I am going to reach out to, uh, Department of Environmental, uh, Police, the, the, um, if there's something, uh, where we can, or just invisible presence. It's difficult to, uh, patrol the water, obviously, when we're on the, what I've, we do the best we can, you know, once they get to the beach, uh, by the, it's a morning, and then, you know, tell them to move the boats from the pond. But if they're off in the, uh, the old mall, you know, and late, you can't get to them, so it's difficult.
Okay.
Thanks, chief.
Okay. So I can recuse myself again, or we can vote to go into executive session, come out of executive session, and see if anyone else is, we can leave the run.
I believe you're, you have Miss Kenyon, you know?
Okay. Uh, I don't know. I don't know if they posted another picture. I was trying to see if they posted other pictures. Is there a number on the town back form?
I don't have forms with me. Kristina Kenyon.
Yeah, she lives on five, she lives on five, I'm sure you've seen her.
You want to take a two-minute recess and Asha, Troy, you want to call them, see if she's going to come?
Yeah, I'll reach out there.
All right, I'm going to take a...
I was going to do the same person, like Troy, you know?
Yeah.
You want to call him too?
Yeah, sure.
I don't think I have any.
All right, so I'm going to take a five-minute recess, and I'll let you guys make those calls.
And you've already accused.
All right, so we're going to call the meeting back to order, and I'm going to recuse myself.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello, how are you?
How are you?
So, tell those those about yourself.
Uh, my name is Tina Kenyon. Uh, I've lived in Halifax now.
Tina, just, we have the noise from the air conditioner, so if you can speak up so everybody can hear you.
Certainly. Uh, my name is Tina Kenyon. I've lived in town now for 14 years. Um, currently, I'm a real estate agent, so that I can spend more time with my children. Prior to real estate, I was in construction for 25 years. Um, I have two degrees in architectural engineering. So I'm very familiar with codes and enforcement and everything else that goes along with building, um, which was why real estate was a pretty good jump. I wanted to run for zoning board because I see a lot of things trying to change in the town, um, and a lot of things that maybe could change for the better, and would hope to be part of those. Is that? I'm not quite sure what else to...
How do you deal with aggressive individuals?
What's that?
How do you deal with aggressive individuals?
Um, I don't generally love aggressive individuals. I'll stand my ground when I need to, but I try and just let the situation diffuse until it needs to, but I'm not going to let something that's not right happen. So I'll definitely stand my ground, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to cause a problem.
What do you bring to the table, over your background?
Um, I think I'm fair, level-headed, educated, um, want what's best for this town, and I just would like to see us grow as a town and, and just have things work better for all of us, because right now I, I don't think things are working the best to their ability.
How's that?
Um, I just see a lot of things that seem like they shouldn't happen, um, and it kind of depends upon who you are, and I don't think that's right in any aspect of life. I think that things should be done properly by the law, by the book, um, and I'd like to see that happen more often.
You've been to town meeting?
I have been to town meeting, yes. I did not go this recent time because my children were at sports.
So you have a lot of sports going on in your life? Do you have the time to commit to zoning board?
Yes. Our sports are generally over by right now. Tonight was kind of a fluke because we had tryouts, so...
I don't know what you're close to.
Okay.
So you feel with your background that you can bring a lot to the zoning board as far as bylaws, the codes?
I do, because I, I know them in depth. I had numerous classes on different sorts of laws, setbacks, perk tests, uh, site development. All of that stuff goes into the architectural degree that I, that I hold. So I think that that would definitely be a benefit on zoning board.
You're aware that you're not the only person on ZBA?
Oh, yes. Absolutely. It's, it's working without those.
When you say I'm going to change, it changes?
Well, I think that you work as a group to change things, but I also think that new ideas can be brought to the table by individuals.
Okay.
I don't have anything else either, thank you. So what's your thought on St. Cory?
I can't read.
What's with that on St. Cory?
Do you have a hair coming in? Yeah, the email I received on the 22nd was, his work schedule is demanding this week, meaning last week, so, because he's on call during last week. Not able to commit to interviews today, meaning the 22nd, or this week, meaning last week. Just wanted to let someone know to free up time slots and help move the meetings along. If a board, if a board has interest with me and can arrange another time or phone call, that would be an option. So he received the same email that everybody else did last week. If he's had the problems coming in for a 10-minute interview, is what, work load is that heavy? And, you know, I don't see a sway. I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Gaynor, just as the ZBA, inasmuch he has the knowledge, he has the education, he's done well in the position over the years, and even though there may be some agitated individuals, that comes along with the job.
I think we have five other individuals who have stepped forward, and Mr. Gaynor has done a great job in this town, but he wears a lot of hats and cert from a lot of committees, and I would like to see more people be able to sit in seats and have a voice for this town, and it's, obviously, shows an interest in that.
See, that, that one statement you made bothers me. You're saying that the ZBA has, has the board not been the voice of the town?
No, I'm saying there should be more people that are able to have a voice if given the opportunity and the desire.
Well, yeah, it stands still. That's my motion.
Okay.
So if we can come to a, a, Cory, Charlie? Well, obviously, Asha could make a motion also, you can decide whether you're going to second her motion. Or if you still, if you won't second each other's motions, then yes, we're in a stand still, and some future meeting, you'll make a decision, one way or the other. We're still in the same situation. I, I'm aware of that, I'm not saying that I have some great solution, it's, it's not a Gordian knot, and I can't cut the baby in half, so... Okay. So what, what is that put? Well, in this case, Bert's, um, expiration date for being on the ZBA is this, uh, tomorrow. Um, there'll be a vacancy on the ZBA until the board cycle makes a decision on appointing someone. I mean, you do have, you'll have four regular members, you'll have Mr. Bressari, who has had his hand up, um, but I don't know that the board's accepting comments, um, at this point, but Dan is on the board as an associate, so you have five votes. Obviously, if there are times when people recuse themselves, you're down to four, but you'll have at least five working members if necessary, in, during the time that there's a vacancy. Well, I'm a little bit disgusted, but that's my standard at this point.
Okay. So I motion to move it to another meeting, because I think this is where we're going to stand for the evening.
So are you moving it to July 13th?
Yes.
I'll put it on the agenda for July 13th?
Sure.
Um, we have sealer of weights and measures, traffic enforcement assistant, Mr. Richard Eldridge. Chief Shav said he would like to be reappointed, is there a motion to reappoint?
I motioned because we were just waiting to hear about that.
Is there a second? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous? No, no word back from, um, Tanya?
No, I, we, we rarely get any word back. She always helps out, we end up appointing her, but we'll, we'll try and reach out again.
Okay. Um, is there a motion to go into executive session for...
It was about David Mason, he said yes, he just...
Dave?
Yeah.
That wasn't that historic.
On the shoe, they go right here, I do you guys?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, is there a motion for Dave Mason for the historic district commission?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Um, I have firefighter discussion for contract, um, and then we have, so, do we have a motion to enter into executive session for contract negotiations? We, we shot patrol offices too, right?
We can give, yes.
Sergeants or? I'll just read them all.
Patrol officers.
All right, so, so a motion to go into executive session, session for contract negotiations for sergeants, patrol officers, firefighters, highway, mixed unit, police chief, fire chief, and all units at Silver Lake Regional School District and HES, as discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town, as well as a motion to go into executive session to discuss, discussion and possible actions on Piccarelli versus Halifax Case 1, colon, 21, CB 11039, as discussing strategy with respect to litigation in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the pound, of the town, and not to return, uh, to open session for any...
Do not return to open session.
I motion.
We don't, we don't have any need to, right?
Well, item number two under discussions, um, unless you do something under that, uh, tomorrow, we won't have a building inspector.
Well, that, I'll, I'll recuse myself, and the board can talk about that before we go into executive session. So I'm recusing myself.
I didn't realize it was different. I motion to allow Robert Piccarelli to serve as a temporary building commissioner for two to three weeks.
Well, I think what by need our dates are in.
Well, July, what was it, July 13th?
July 13th would be a date that you could pick, yes. The question will be whether you'll have a decision from the court by then.
Right.
I believe there's a hearing scheduled for that date. I don't know that you'll have a decision on that date, so if you get to July 14th.
We have a meeting the 13th night, so I make a motion until July 13th, and then if we have to extend, we'll talk about it then.
Second, I'm losing it all, I think he should be brought on full time. All in favor?
Um, yep, I am in favor of letting him be temporary until the 13th.
All right, so is there a motion to go into executive session, as I previously read?
No, come on, read it again.
So what?
It said, "We will not be returning to open session except to adjourn." Huh?
We have to vote. We have to vote, I move, no one second.
Is there, there was a motion, who seconded?
Second.
Uh, Ashley?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Myself, yes. All right, thank you, everyone.
Bye.